Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Demme?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker? Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of June 21st, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
Yes, Mr. President, we have appeal number 2021-20. This is a renewal for use variance to allow automobile repair in I-1 Light Industrial at 1035 East McKinley.
Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee, no ordinance on first reading, no resolutions, so we will move into ordinances on second reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance 2021-20 as amended and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Menontine Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a University Marketplace PUD amendment to allow an electric automobile dealership and service center at 7207 Grape Road, the former JCPenney's Home Store.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President, to the members of the common council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2021-20AA, report that they have examined said matter and that their opinions should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to accept the committee report. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. This is the second reading in public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2021-20 as amended. Anyone wishing to speak in favor who is physically present, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one physically present, is there anybody participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Mr. Compton?
Mr. Hicksonbaugh, as much as I don't want to, I am going to ask that we continue this until such time we have someone here on behalf of the petitioner to present this to us.
Excuse me, I'm the petitioner. I was just waiting to respond to questions, but I can speak to the project. I just didn't know if you wanted me to present it again?
Actually, that would be our preference for you to come forward and make a brief presentation, followed by questions from us, so.
Certainly.
If you would, begin, sir, by stating your name and address for the record.
Chris Sotos, Key Development Partners, 515 North.
If I can stop you.
Mr. Compton, I assume this means that your motion is now.
Is now withdrawn.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Sotos, I am the applicant, Key Development Partners, 515 North State Street in Chicago, 60654. We are proposing to convert the existing building, the main building that used to be JCPenney's, which is approximately 36,500 feet, to an electronic automotive, alternative energy, and solar-powered company use. With this use, we will be knocking down the western building, which is approximately 4,800 square feet. We do not propose any other additions to the main JCPenney building. We will be remodeling the facade, new color schemes, paint, cleaning up some of the existing storefront with some new penetrations for the new use. With that, we recognize the parking lot is in need of some repair. And the last time I was here, the neighbors along Timberland came out and brought up some very good points. Three points were brought up to our attention. The first is lighting. They were concerned about sight lighting and spillover onto the western side of the property. The second point was questions about what kind of landscape material we'll be using. And I believe the city has given us some suggestions as to creating a hedge along Cleveland. And the third point is the condition of the fence along the western side of the property. To address these points, we've had some discussions with the neighbors, particularly one who's very much the most, really the only one affected, which is, bless you. Which is 52930 Timberland, Mr. Waters. His house is the one that is closest to the western edge of our property, where there's a finger of parking. And he brought up the concern about how it will be lit and what will be the conditions in the evening. Our use is typically closed at 7:00 PM. They do not have a strict policy of heavy lighting off-hours. They typically do whatever local code suggests. So, as we looked at our sight lighting plan, along that finger of parking on the western side, there's currently two poles. Those poles are at about 25 feet high. They currently each contain two heads on them. We're proposing to change all the heads in this parking lot to LED. They provide a much softer and more focused lighting, and they're, obviously, they're a newer technology with a much lower electric usage. In addition, on the western pole, what we'd like to do is just keep one head on that pole facing east. Right now, there are two heads. So, we'll keep only one head, which will keep the majority of the lighting away from the western side. We also propose to put a cutoff shield on the lighting, so it avoids any significant spillover. And third, we will keep those on a separate switch, so if that's not a heavily-used area, we can just get those turned off. But the use itself is not a late-night or heavy-parking-intensive use. So, we've communicated those to Mr. Waters, and he understands it. And again, he, I, his backyard is really the one that's closest to our property. The other issue, which again is really heavily Mr. Waters' issue, is the condition of the fence. We walked the property. It is not in very good shape, primarily the part that backs up to Mr. Waters' residence. There's one other residence, as you go south, the condition's pretty good there. But as you get to Mr. Waters' property, most of that fence needs either repair or replacement. We will do that. The third issue that was brought to our attention was the landscaping, and we're open to whatever, you know, the advice of the city is, and we'll take it into account.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sotos?
Mr. Belovich? Yes, sir. Once your operation is up and running, how many people will you employ or anticipate employing?
Full-time, we expect there to be about 25 to 30 people here at least.
Thank you. Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Going back to your statement on the fence, where you said that you would repair that, would it be repaired in that to match the existing fence there? Or would you tear it all down and rebuild?
I'm not certain. It's a stockade fence, I believe is the style. I'm not a big fan of it. I do know that having walked it on both sides, a lot of it is in poor condition. Some of it is leaning over significantly. I think it's probably an issue that the current owner should have been addressing all along. There's other types of fencing that I think is a little bit more attractive and maybe a little bit more stable. So, our portion, I wouldn't mind really upgrading it. But the problem is, that fence runs a long way, and as it gets to the other office building, we don't control it as it heads further north.
I'm just asking, you know, if you repaired the fence, would it be in the likeness of the other fence, so that it's not like a warp of standing out there?
Our preference would be to keep it consistent and not stick out.
And you've talked that with Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Other questions from the council?
Mr. Compton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming here tonight, appreciate it, and appreciate you coming to Mishawaka.
Thank you.
Will this be a, besides a place you can go in, and I know it's not going to be your, what we think is a traditional auto dealership, but I know you'll have auto sales and things of that nature there, and you can go and look and test-drive Teslas, or electric vehicles, I assume. Will this be an auto charging station as well?
That's one of the, yes, it will be. That's one of the attractions is this demographic area with its population deserves a dedicated charging station. And its proximity to both a lot of people and the highway system makes it an attractive area. So, one of the big expenditures for us is to bring in significantly more electricity to the site for dedicated charging stations. And it is not a traditional car sales. It's not the kind of place where you will go to and say, "I'd like to buy this car." It is not a kind of place where it will be lit up in any conspicuous way or with any sort of flashing neon signs. It's not that sort of automotive use in any way. If anything, signage and branding are minimal, very tasteful and elegant.
To, if I may, Mr. President, to expand to that. So, tell me how, you know, I need gas in the middle of the night, I can find a gas station open somewhere, a 7-Eleven or something. Will people be able to drive in in off-hours and use your chargers?
Yes.
Okay. How many chargers will be there? Do you have any idea yet?
I believe there will be eight, but I'm not certain.
Do you anticipate them being used in off-hours? I mean, I know an electric vehicle takes several hours to reach full capacity. How do you see that working?
I'm not the expert on the brand or the ability to repower. This automotive user has several different types of charging capabilities, some of which charge quicker than others. I believe full charging can be several hours. Quick charging for a more modest range of 100 miles can be done in as quick as 15 minutes. But I'm not the brand expert.
I understand, and this is all new to all of us. So, as we're thinking about neighbors, you know, the automotive business, the automobile business on one hand, but then you have the charging business, and what does that bring to that area? So, I'm thinking about that, not overly concerned about it, but I'm thinking about it. But thank you. I think we'll all learn from this, as to kind of what the future might be in automobiles.
I think if you look at some of your other retailers in this area, you will see that they have some charging stations available. Lowe's, Home Depot, it's not unusual for some grocery stores, Whole Foods, to have charging stations available in their parking lots as well.
And I know the mall right across from you has multiple charging stations too, so thank you again.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sotos, for attending this evening and for your presentation. But more importantly, thank you for meeting with Mr. Waters and some other concerned citizens in the area, so I appreciate your efforts on that. Your comment regarding the proximity to the highway does make perfect sense. And if you were to guess in terms of the citizens or patrons that would be charging their vehicles from, just passer-bys from the toll road or the highway versus the local residents. Is it 50/50, 80/20, et cetera? Would you say the majority would be out-of-towners traveling through the highway?
I'm not able to speak to that. The tenant would need to. I just don't have the history, sorry.
Sure, no problem, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Sotos?
Sir, let me echo the comments of my colleagues. Thank you for your presentation and your time here this evening, and thank you for the outreach that you did to the surrounding neighbors. You may have mentioned it, and I perhaps didn't pick up on it, but I know that you and your colleagues had scheduled a meeting here in these chambers with residents, and due to what appeared to be a lack of interest on the part of the neighborhood, the meeting didn't take place. But we appreciate the effort nonetheless.
Mr. Waters is the one who's really primarily affected, and he has a nice property with beautiful trees, and full of respect that he wants to keep it looking very residential. And I think what we're going to do, not only will achieve it, but it's also one of the most lowest-impact uses this corner would see. Anything else would likely bring more traffic, or as Mr. Waters and I discovered today, cars driving around being a menace at the site, which they did just two hours ago, and happens, I guess, more frequently on Sundays. I think this use is just, it's very low impact. It is not an evening business, and I think it'll be very peaceful for the neighborhood.
We have a lengthy set of conditions that have been embedded in the ordinance, 15, as fate would have it. Have you had a chance to review those?
I have.
Conditions? And are you authorized on behalf of your firm and then the end-user of this property to commit to us that you agree to those conditions as set out in the proposed ordinance?
I am.
One of the things that, as the media has covered this petition as it moved through the process, that caught my attention, was that although you've provided a great deal of information, even this evening, you've been very diplomatic about not mentioning the name of who the end-user is going to be. And, you know, thinking back of my time on this council, I can't recall another instance where we haven't had that disclosed to us. Now, I'd be the first to agree with you as an attorney that the issue before us is the appropriateness of the use, not the identity of the end-user per se. But can you help me understand why it is, and if you have mentioned it again, I may have missed it in your presentation, but can you help me understand what it is that precludes you from making that part of your presentation?
This particular tenant, which is by far best-in-class and the most successful and very, very recognizable brand name in the space, we have done two other transactions with, both of which are currently under construction. With each transaction, we sign a non-disclosure agreement. Those are the rules of engagement with this particular tenant, and we are just not authorized to release any name beyond that.
And I would never ask you to violate any contractual prohibitions along those lines. But can you at least share with us when it is that the name of the ultimate end-user will become known to the public?
As soon as we have, we pass committee and we're zoned, we will then go about to execute a lease, which we've done two other transactions, so we're close to being finished. We have a form that we will use as soon as we have a binding agreement where we become authorized to be public. This user has engaged their own due diligence team, their own professional consultants for architect, civil engineering. They've spent money, as have we, so they're very serious about this area. Prior to this, we were focused on Fort Wayne. They skipped Fort Wayne, feeling that this, their studies indicated that this was a better fit for their customer base. But with each transaction, we're on a non-disclosure, and we have to honor it.
Understood. And again, I can appreciate that as a practitioner. I will tell you, as a governmental official, I take issue with that. And I'm not indicating to you that that will generate a particular outcome with regard to my vote, but again, I find it to be inconsistent with low, these many presentations that we have received as a council over the course of a long period of time. So, I understand the contractual box that you're in. And again, I am not going to encourage you at all to try to violate the terms of that NDA. But for the record, I do find that to be troubling, that that fact hasn't been presented to us, along with the other compelling facts that you've laid in front of us this evening.
And for the record, this is the first time I've had to do this without disclosing the tenant, so I fully agree with you. Never had to do this before.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Other questions? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Apologize. One other question, I do commend Mr. Hicksonbaugh and share some of his thoughts and concerns, but if you could, could you at least give us an idea if the amount of similar dealerships around this nation, 1, 50, 100, just so that we know that we're dealing with a reputable company?
Very reputable, very much in the public eye. They have hundreds of locations. It varies state by state based on the regulations. Michigan, for instance, is a little less favorable. That makes this area that much more favorable. But they have hundreds of locations, and their other lines of businesses are also very well-known and very much in the public eye. And they are, as they have ramped up sales the last several years, 500,000-plus units, they realize they have a need for servicing their customers.
Thank you.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just to expand on your hours, you'd say you close at 7:00, basically. Nice surprise, you open about 8:00 or something like that. What's your weekend hours?
Similar, maybe opening up a little bit late, but they do typically have some Sunday hours.
So, you'd have both Saturday and Sunday hours?
Typically, yes.
But no later than 7:00 on a week?
No, it's not typically later than that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Former Councilman Gleisner always insisted that, you know, when people would build something and it was in that area, it may be a Granger post office, but if we're going to name it after something of Mishawaka, would be appreciated, because you're still going to be in the city of Mishawaka, but it could be a Granger address. We had Lexus of South Bend on Grape Road at one point in time. I mean, that was just terrible. You look at Hooters of South Bend, they're on DeRoe. My God, we're in Mishawaka. We would appreciate just a little bit of love on that side.
So, the city of Mishawaka wants its due, right?
Well, I mean, you're within the city limits, but yet it has a different post office because we've expanded.
I understand. The whole Granger issue is a little confusing, and Rodney pointed out to me that even his little street is unusual. Because I believe he's in between two jurisdictions, sitting in unincorporated.
Right.
St. Joseph County?
Yeah. Is there a five-digit, we're four-digit. So, I mean, if we're going to do it, let's do it right, and of Mishawaka, if they're going to go that route.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benicki. Other questions or comments from the council?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Rodney Waters, 52930 Timberland Drive. Since the plan commission meeting, we didn't like it at all, the situation, but Chris. And we've all done our research on the street, and we brought up some things to him of our concerns. And we've all done our research about Tesla, and lighting, and we would welcome them as a neighbor.
Thank you.
But we've been in contact quite a few times over the internet, on the telephone, and we spent like a couple hour and a half, two hours this afternoon in our backyard. And we would welcome them, so.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Waters? And thank you for coming to the podium since we've referred to you time and time again. It's nice to put a name to the face.
I got depressed.
Your 15 minutes of fame, so take advantage of it.
Yep, my 15 minutes of fame. I said, my boss, he called me on a, I think it was the next day or Sunday, and he says, "I got to ask you a question, but are you going to charge me extra?" I said, "Yeah, my wife says I need a raise because I'm a celebrity now." So.
That's great.
But we back these guys, the neighborhood, everybody that spoke at the plan commission meeting. After we've done our research and we found out, you know, we had two options, and they were bad. And these guys are the best, I think.
All right, thank you.
So, our neighborhood backs Chris.
Fantastic. You can be patient with us for a couple more seconds. I think some of my colleagues will have some questions, and I'll start with Mr. Mamalenti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not a question, just more of a comment. I want to say I appreciate you coming forward. Again, as Mr. Hicksonbaugh said, it's good to see a face to a name, but more importantly, thank you for keeping the communication line open.
Yeah, we've talked almost once a week, emails and.
And doing your own research and having an open mind, so.
Because I called him and I told him, I said, you know, "I'm the instigator of all this, because our backyard is right there." And he really appreciated, you know. Most people don't even tell who they are, and this guy has done a lot of research, a lot of research.
I appreciate you both, thank you.
He knows what he's talking about.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the council? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you much.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Then, is there anyone present in the chambers who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance?
Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Compton?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to say, I think this is tremendous. I think it says a lot for Mishawaka, for our community, for this just Michiana area but Mishawaka. I think this is tremendous. I think that this group is going into a little plaza that really didn't have any life left. And I think that maybe to, maybe, the neighbors will judge this in the future, but I think that this could bring life back to that plaza. Maybe it's not what they want to see there. I know they want like a quiet neighborhood and such, but I'm hoping to see that this brings a little bit of life back to their reasonable type thing. Maybe a little restaurant, you know, who knows, that could come back there. And I think the future of the automotive industry is electric vehicles. I think that's where it's going to be, much to the disdain of some of my, you know, Motorhead friends and things of the past, but I think that's going to be the future. And I really, really think this is neat for Mishawaka, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton.
Mr. Benicki? Thank you. Mr. Sotos, Mr. Waters, thanks for being here this evening. Appreciate it. Look forward to this being a great development, being a good partner with the city, and I look forward to taking a quick test drive when they finally arrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just kind of echo Mr. Compton's comments. I do think it's a great win for the city of Mishawaka. As he had mentioned, I think it could be, this type of brand could really revitalize that complex and that plaza. I think it just kind of puts Mishawaka on a map and lets others know what a great city that we have here. So, my only concern is the fact that we'll have 24-hour charging stations. I understand that's the nature of the beast. I feel a little bit more comfortable knowing that there's going to be about eight of them, so I don't think it'll be too heavily-used in the off-hours, but that will be my only concern, and I look forward to supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti.
And you're welcome to sit down. You can stand if you like, but again, I appreciate the information that you've brought to us. I appreciate the vision that's represented by this petition, and I agree with my colleagues that this will be a welcome addition to our community. As I mentioned earlier, my major concern is the lack of specificity with regard to who the end-user is. And in many instances, that in and of itself would tilt my vote toward voting against this. In this instance, I'm willing to overlook that for two reasons. Number one, the prior use in this facility is, in my mind, at least somewhat consistent with what's being proposed here. Granted, it's automotive as opposed to furniture and retail, but there's enough of a retail component to what you've described to me, that it makes sense that it would be located in this spot. Perhaps more important than that is the outreach that you did to the neighborhood and the fact that you took into consideration Mr. Waters, his wife, the other folks who had some concerns, and it appears that you and the developer have taken that into account. So, while I will never like the fact that we don't have. So while I will never like the fact that we don't have full disclosure when somebody steps up to the podium and asks us to place our trust in them, because ultimately, that in my mind is what land use matters come down to. There's a legal component, there's an architectural and engineering component, but there's a matter of trust. We as a community need to trust that not you, but the end user, will stick to these commitments and be a good neighbor in Michoacan. But because of the outreach that you did to the neighborhood and the other factors that you've described, I am willing to vote for this, but I want to go on the record as saying, in different circumstances, the lack of disclosure in and of itself would be a problem for me. But I appreciate your time and the information that you provided, and thank you for your efforts. And with that, if there is no other question or comment from the council, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
And Mr. Hickson Ball?
Yes.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
We have proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending the chap, ordinance amending chapter one thirty-seven of the municipal code of the city of Michoacan, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the city of Michoacan, Indiana. This is to rezone from C dash one district to C dash seven district to allow a restaurant with drive-through part of the, of two seven five four Lincoln Way East. This is existing parking area for Michoacan Inn.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Michoacan, your committee on land use planning, to whom have we served, the matter of proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, report that they have examined said matter, and that their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will move into the second reading of public hearing of proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. Anyone wishing, physically present who wishes to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening. Mike Huber, Abbot Marsh Consultants, three fifteen West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. I have a site plan, can we get a projector up? I only brought one out, if we can do the projector or we can't.
Probably not on the fly, so if you want to just pass it down the row.
Thank you. I'll miss for that. As mentioned, our petitioner is interested in developing a drive-through restaurant on one acre of property east of the Michoacan Inn, adjacent to the east property line off of Lincoln Way Avenue, just east of Capitol Avenue. The plan commission heard the petition and recommended in favor of the proposed rezoning at their June meeting. The project will, in addition to tonight's rezoning, will still have to take the additional, the following additional public hearings and plan commission approvals. If it's approved this evening, we'll have to create a new development parcel through the city subdivision process in order to create an actual buildable lot, and we'll also have to get final site plan approval of the final, the final lot and the final building and all of the final drainage and grading and all of the technical plans as well. Given the traffic volumes and the existing commercial development that are within this stretch of Lincoln Way Avenue, including four C-seven drive-through restaurant uses across the street, the proposed C-seven drive-through use that's being proposed for this site is consistent with the neighborhood and is also consistent with the city's comprehensive plan for the area. Recognizing that this area has significant traffic volumes and some, a number of lanes and some issues with access to the site, we have worked diligently with the city of Elka, or the city of Michoacan, planning and engineering departments to make sure that we propose a solution that mitigates any conflicts in as safe a manner as possible. In our initial discussions with the city engineering and planning departments, they suggested that we reach out to NDOT with the idea of reducing the current concrete median length to allow us to create a left-turn lane for traffic that's traveling east and accessing the property from the north. That's just short of the primary entrance to the McDonald's for cars traveling west and turning south into the McDonald's. So we're really creating safe harbor for both of those turning movements to be out of the general flow of traffic and not impeding the general flow of traffic and allowing them a safe place to get their timing to go in and out and accessing the property. And we have submitted those plans to NDOT, and we've received preliminary approval from NDOT on those. We're in the process right now of completing the road survey so that we can start the permitting process with NDOT to allow those to happen. I know that there are representatives online from our client, the restaurant will be Dunkin' Donuts, our client will be on, is on as well, and they have additional details in terms of the actual projected volumes of traffic at the restaurant, when those peak hours might be, what those peak volumes might be, and what kind of the average service times might be in terms of stacking and some of those kind of things. So that's, I think, our main key issue is to try to create and resolve the traffic mitigation and congestion issues. We also think that this traffic solution, in conjunction with the new investment in the property, should allow future redevelopment and development opportunities to incur in this same area that might alleviate some of the other issues that are known in that property right now as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Huber, Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Mr. Huber, will there be any connectivity to the property, to the east, the AutoZone property?
So the AutoZone property is a difficult connection to make, given that it's a twelve-foot grade difference between AutoZone and where this site is. We have explored that somewhat. We are continuing to explore that. If it's feasible, we'll look at that and we'll work in conjunction with the city of Michoacan Engineering and Planning to make sure that if that happens, it doesn't bring up any additional access concerns trying to get in and out of AutoZone or things like that. But our goal is to provide connectivity, if it's possible, with approval and blessing of the planning and engineering departments.
Even to the back of the property, because, I mean, a lot of times, people driving down the road, they see that Dunkin' Donuts, the next thing you know, they try to turn in, they're in the wrong lot, and they're trying to swing in and out, and they get dicey.
Well, we've eliminated the current access directly onto Lincoln Way for this project, and we're using the shared drive that serves the hotel and the boat launch, and we're not even getting our own access off of that shared drive. We're actually sharing the hotel's drive off of that shared drive as well. So, you know, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're limiting any kind of potential stacking or any kinds of issues with traffic related to Lincoln Way Avenue.
Summertime, it's not as bad because it's light till nine-thirty, ten o'clock.
Right.
Wintertime, you know, four-thirty, five o'clock, it's very dark.
Correct, and that may be an issue in the mornings for this particular use, but I'm not sure that's a, it's not necessarily a heavy nighttime user at the Dunkin' Donuts, so I'm not sure that, you know, it's as much of an issue with this user, but correct. I mean-
Yeah, I mean, people go to work at five or six in the morning, may want to stop and-
That's right.
You know, grab a little something and-
Grab a coffee and some donuts and-
So the parking lot, I mean, will it be well illuminated so that, you know?
Yeah, it will be in full compliance with the city's lighting standards, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Huber? Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward.
John Pericini, six-three-three Windy Cove Court, Michoacan, Coldwell Banker Commercial. I just wanted to give you a little update, because I know Tony and I have talked about this numerous times. Realize the corner has been kind of a, not the greatest situation for Michoacan for quite some time. We do have the hotel under contract. Now, nothing's for sure until it's done, obviously, so I can't make promises, but it is with a national, and they're gonna joint venture with a large developer in the community to do kind of a half-national, then half of a little, maybe a long-term type of state. And then, we always kind of tried to plan the outlots to help get this thing triggered going because of the layout of the hotel, you know, is old, and for someone to come in, we've come close to having it torn down and turn it the other way, build something towards the riverside, but it just made it very difficult, the way the layout and everything was, and you have the creek over there, so. But this is the best thing that we've really kind of come across this year, we've been very fortunate, so hopefully if these things, now the Dunkin', they have moved very quickly, real quickly. The other one, we're still kind of working through things, but they are, they're both under con, that other one is under contract, so hopefully we'll, you know, Tony, we won't have anywhere to hang out anymore, but that's, that's-
We'll have your problems in the third district.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pericini?
I have one.
Mr. Hazen?
When we talked before, we talked that this developer might leave the back half towards the river available for the new development-
Yes.
-to develop all that, so that's still gonna be done, right? It's a possibility?
Yeah, we tried to, and tried to protect the river, too, so the Dunkin' one, we wanted to give it enough room so they had plenty of parking, it wouldn't move to the west too much, so it's, it lays out pretty decent, really. We went back and forth a little bit of that. And the entrance thing, I think, talked to Ron a little bit about that. I think there's a lift station out in the front there, isn't there? So that complicates this also of adjoining, but the layout came pretty good. Remember, we were almost gonna do a C-store, but they, you know, NDOT, they're gonna, wow, that stacking for the left turn, which will definitely help, and line up the drive with McDonald's as best as possible, so I drive that every day, fifty times a day, whether I need it or not. The light does control better than it used to, because a lot of traffic's going north and south, not that Lincoln Way isn't busy, but it's better than it used to. It's when the people want to go from this and take an angle cut, that's when they get blasted, you know, so that's what they're trying to line those up, so it's a straight shot over and not somebody, you know, cutting it over, and that's when you get in a lot of those accidents, so. Thank you.
Mr. Benicki?
Did you bring any samples?
Of which one?
The donuts.
Not yet.
Not yet. All right.
Soon to be.
Any other questions for Mr. Pericini? Thank you. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone.
Hi, this is Parag Patel. I don't know if everyone can hear me or not.
We can hear you, sir.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for your time here. I'm one of the franchisee owners of this Dunkin', and we're very excited to bring another store. We opened up our first store in Michoacan a couple of years ago on Lincoln Way. Hopefully, all you gentlemen and ladies have been there and enjoyed our samples. I'll definitely ask Eric Hawkins, who's our director of operations, also this call to bring samples next time, so we will have those. But, no, we've been looking pretty extensively for good sites for our stores. We have, you know, several stores in Indiana and Michigan, we have other stores in Chicago, so we're a very well-respected Dunkin' operator. They've given us the territory to expand our operations in. Michoacan's been a fantastic partner for our first restaurant there, we're looking forward to our second restaurant, and, you know, if you have any questions for me as one of the owner franchisees, please, please go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Patel? Not so much a question, but a comment. Thank you for your interest in expanding your business in Michoacan, we appreciate it. Although you're not here in person, you may be able to tell that I and others are very interested in Dunkin' Donuts being a part of the community, so thank you for your willingness to expand.
Thank you.
You are welcome. And with that, if you would, please mute your microphone, and then I'll ask if there is anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Seeing and hearing no one, is there anyone here physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Hazen?
I just want to say that I have talked to John before, and Matt and I put it out to the neighborhoods, and that, and we've, I've got nothing but praise back, and people are excited about it, so I wanted to let the other councilmen know that, that I didn't get one complaint about it. Most people are excited about it.
Excellent. Thank you, and thank you to Mr. Mamalanti as well for your work in reaching out to the neighborhood. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson Ball?
Yes.
Ordinance passes eight to zero. We have proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, and ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the city of Michoacan, Indiana, and providing zoning clarifications therefore. This is an annexation and zoning of nineteen point zero-two acres to R-one for a proposed single-family residential subdivision. This is Autumn Ridge, Phase Four, and this is a public hearing with no vote.
Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing on proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. Anyone physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium.
Yes, Mike Huber, Abbot Marsh Consultants, three fifteen West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. Thank you for your consideration of our request this evening. Our petitioner is asking to annex a nineteen-acre parcel that's located between Autumn Ridge Estates and Blair Hills neighborhood into the city of Michoacan under an R-one zoning classification to permit the development of the parcel as a future Phase Four of the Autumn Ridge, single-family home subdivision. It's contiguous currently to the city on three sides, three of the four sides. The developer, Allen Edwin's Homes, has acquired the property that is already planned as Phase Three, as indicated on the, on the drawing, and will be developing Phase Three over the next two years. Phase Four would probably come after that in twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four. This was also passed out of the plan commission with a favorable recommendation at their June meeting. It's currently planned to have approximately thirty-nine single-family lots, will include some retention, and they want to maintain some of the wooded area up in that northeast corner as well. Prior to the plan commission hearing, the developer did facilitate neighborhood meetings with both the neighborhood association for Blair Hills and for Autumn Ridge, so they met with both neighborhood associations. I didn't attend the Autumn Ridge one, but I was at the Blair Hills one. I know concerns that were raised, there were some concerns about some of the drainage issues related to the development. Again, I'm the planner, not the engineer, but I know that our engineers are fully aware of the issues, they're fully aware of the soil and the grades and the elevation changes, and we will definitely work in conjunction with the city engineering department, which will oversee and approve any drainage plans at the final fight plan level anyway. We'll make sure that we have those addressed before those plans would be approved. Given the location of the property between the two single-family subdivisions, we heard at the neighborhood association meetings, and we agree, we think this will be the least intensive and most compatible use that that property could take on in the future. And just to give you an idea, I think the home values are anticipated to be in the range of two sixty to four hundred, so maybe some stuff a little bit on the lower, more affordable range, and some stuff that might be a little more on the, you know, more moderate to higher end as well. So I think it's gonna be a mix and a range to allow some different things to happen in there, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Huber? Mr. Belovich?
Just a comment. I talked with you, I think, at the meeting, and you're correct, there will be a challenge with drainage, there's an awful lot of water that moves north off of that slope, but I think that that's great use for the, for the property. I know years ago, there was a union hall that was going to be back there, there were a number of other things, and I think that developing that property is good for the community.
Mr. Compton?
Yes, Mr. Huber, are these, and I don't think they are, are these incorporated city streets in this subdivision, or they are? Mr. Prince is shaking his head yes.
Yeah, I believe they will be, they will be to the, given to the city, yes.
City standard sidewalks and all that.
Correct, yes, absolutely.
Very good, thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Compton? Other questions for Mr. Huber?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward.
Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone. Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then we will close the public hearing on the proposed ordinance pursuant to state law. No final action will be taken this evening, but will be taken at a subsequent council meeting. Thank you.
We have proposed ordinance 2021-23 and ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the city of Michawaka, Indiana, and providing zoning clarifications therefore. This is an annexation and zoning of 5.24 acres to I-1 from a proposed self-storage facility at 16996 State Road 23. It's also a public hearing, no vote.
Thank you. We will open the public hearing on proposed ordinance 2021-23. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Once again, Mr. Huber.
I don't think I have as many items on there. I'm wearing my welcome out tonight. So, thank you again for your consideration, Mike Huber, Abbot Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. As mentioned, petitioner is asking to annex approximately five acres on State Road 23 just south of the toll road, under the I-1 industrial zoning classification to permit the development of a self-storage warehouse buildings. The parcel adjacent on the north, is adjacent on the north of the North Douglas Road condominiums, which are in the city. That PUD development that has the North Douglas Road condominiums also includes six self-storage warehouse buildings in it. The Michawaka Plan Commission did pass this annexation and rezoning request with a favorable recommendation at the June meeting. Given the frontage on State Road 23, the proximity to the toll road, we don't think the viability of this property as continued single-family residential use is very likely. The proposed self-storage use actually, I think, would be minimally impacted by any of the toll road noise and any of the proximity issues being related to the proximity of the toll road that that might have on a property that might negatively impact maybe a more commercial office or even multifamily residential use. And fits with the developing commercial office land use patterns along, that are developing currently along State Road 23. Both Planning and Engineering and our Plan Commission proposal commented on the proposed office that's on the site plan that would serve the self-storage development and the requirement for connecting that to city sewer. We don't think it's very feasible for us to go through the toll road to get to the north where the sewer is currently existing. But we are exploring currently with the property owner to the south, who has a private sewer connection, the possibility of securing some easements and accessing the sewer that way. If we're unsuccessful there, the developer is open to not including the office on the front end of the development and saving that feature for a future time when the actual sewer connection might be more readily available and more affordable. So, we're working with the city and the developer on both of those options. And it shouldn't impact our ability to do what we want to do there either way. Appreciate your consideration again of our request. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Huber?
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward.
Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Is there anyone in the room this evening who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. And then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then we will close the public hearing on this proposed ordinance. Once again, pursuant to state statute, no final action will be taken on this proposed ordinance this evening, but rather, it will take place at a subsequent council meeting, following appropriate notice. Thank you. And with that, we will move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to the podium to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Thank you. Then, this evening, we have no unfinished business, nor am I aware of any new business. But I will inquire as to whether there is any other new business to come before the council. Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
No vote.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.